Okay, good evening. Welcome to Grand Blank Township Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, August 24th. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Clerk Robertson, would you care to call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Supervisor. Trustee Hugo.
Here.
Trustee Fike.
Here.
Trustee Raridan.
Here.
Trustee White.
Here.
Treasurer Kilmer.
Here.
Myself, here. Supervisor Bennett.
Yes, here, thank you.
Seven, nothing in the quorum.
Okay, and now I'll ask for an approval of the regular agenda. Motion by Dr. Raridan, supported by Mr. Fike.
Okay, motion by Raridan, supported by Fike.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to public comments, we'll invite anybody in the public that wishes to speak to give their name and address and come on up, give their name and address and give us your three minutes.
Editor, 7212 Porter Road. I just wanted to start off with a little story here. Probably about fifteen years ago, I was over set on my property about twenty percent. And we got that all straightened out. We didn't have to go to tribunal, the assessing office took care of it. And when the money came to me, it says we only go back eighteen months. So, that's as far as you can go back to get your taxes. That makes me think about what happened with the McPhail and Library at your last meeting. It was four years. They went back. They were supposed to bill you and be happy with what they billed you, but they went back and said they made a mistake and they want four years back. I don't know if that's appropriate, I just thought that was unfair to go back that far. I mean, how far do we go back? Like in the Parks and Recs, do we go back to nineteen seventy-four and straighten the books out? I think there has to be a statute limitation there, so, you know, I just wanted to bring that up because the library is ran by the GDL. The only thing we do there, in fact, the money for the GDL lion's share comes from the township. So, it's basically the building that we share with the city. We're partners on a building. That's all it is, is a physical structure and we maintain it. I wonder why we split sixty, forty? Do we own the building sixty, forty? I guess that'd be okay, if we're paying sixty percent and we own sixty percent. So, you know, I guess, does this board really under, no? Do we own it sixty, forty? And if we own it sixty, forty, we should be saying what's going on there because we own the lion's share. But if we own it fifty, fifty, why aren't we paying fifty, fifty? So, I just wanted to bring that up, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to make public comment? Seeing no further public comment, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. And at this time, I will ask for an approval of the consent agenda. Motion by trustee Hugo, support by trustee Fike. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we will move to our strategic plan update. And in your packet, I believe, that was in the packet, right, Mr. Lehman? I wasn't sure if you sent it out separately or, but we have the Saginaw Street Corridor Study. Hopefully everybody had a chance to browse through it a little bit. There was considerable amount of work put in on this in two thousand eight. And it appears, you know, through discussion, that maybe right after the document was put together and the study was done, we hit some recessionary times, so, the plan wasn't really carried out at that point. But there was everything from actually professional study to focus group, bringing in residents and businesses for their suggestions. And it's very detailed, so, Mr. Lehman, anything you'd like to report on?
As part of the strategic plan, the board selected Saginaw Street Corridor improvements as one of the goals, and with the key objective being improved infrastructure and appearance of the north end of the township. One of the first things that we put in under our strategies and tactics was to review the two thousand eight Saginaw Street Corridor Plan. You know, I think it's important, especially for the new board to come together, now that we've made this a strategic plan item, to at least review this and see if it is still even relevant. This was prepared by the then Planning Commission, but, you know, even though it's a corridor study, it really, it's your vision as a board, not so much the Planning Commission's. It's, you know, the seven individuals here that are gonna move the strategic plan forward. So I think that this was a good spot to start. Maybe you liked some of this corridor study, maybe some of it's still relevant, maybe some of it isn't any longer, it doesn't fit the vision of where this board would like to take us. So I think that's the kind of discussion I'm looking for. Do we wanna bounce this back to the Planning Commission for review to see if it, you know, is still relevant or updated? Or does it anywhere near your idea of what you'd like to see happen in that Saginaw Street Corridor? And I think if the board can provide us some feedback there, then that will give us a better idea of which direction you'd like us to go in as staff.
I think one of the things, I remember when we were putting together strategic plan, I know we said, or actually, Mr. Lehman had said, you know, what would you like it to look like, you know, in five years? Don't worry about money.
Are you sure that's what I said?
And this is one of those plans that looks beautiful, and if we had unlimited budget, I'd say let's go on and do all these things, right? Unfortunately, we do have a limited budget. I love, you know, the ideas in here. It's kind of overwhelming, the amount of, you know, things that are in here. I guess it's a great blueprint. It's kind of like, to me, it's more like, what could we afford to start with here? One step that we're taking is actually, we have a meeting in the next couple of weeks with all the property owners along Saginaw Street between Hill and Maple. And so, we're going to get some direction from them, and I think we'll wanna share, you know, probably some of them were participants in this plan, I would guess. But I'd like to, you know, talk with them about this and get some feedback from them because a number of the things would take their cooperation, right? I mean, some of the suggestions are, you know, you look along Saginaw Street and the chain link fence that we have. If that were a uniform look along here, where instead of having chain link, we had some type of decorative type fence, it'd make a huge difference. But again, it's going to take the property owner. If we're looking at a low interest loan program for refacing the fronts of their buildings or for putting sidewalks in, it's gonna take their cooperation to do that. So there's lots of ideas in here. It's kind of a matter of where we, where do we start? Looking at the outline that Mr. Lehman had put together as far as how the staff might progress on this, the goal, you know, was community vitality, Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement. It starts out with review of the two thousand eight Saginaw Street Corridor Plan, which is the plan that we've all received. Design standards, update the plan, present plan to township, board for approval, create implementation plan. I mean, this even had a resolution that I don't believe probably was passed. Mr. Laddie may know because he probably was on the board back then.
Yeah, I cannot recall.
Okay.
As I'm sitting here tonight.
It's a couple meetings ago.
Couple meetings ago.
But there's a resolution in here as far as Saginaw Street Study Amendment to the master plan. So there's, there's a lot to digest here, but, you know, a group of people put the time and the effort into putting the plan together, so I think it's worthy of us spending a little bit of time and going through it. Everything from streetlights to sidewalks, light baths, what have you. Any thoughts from anybody on this? It obviously was something that was important to us as a board. It was listed as one of our areas.
I have...
Yes, Mr. Kilmer.
I look at this, and I agree with you, there's, there's a lot of good ideas in here, but it's kind of like, okay, where do we start? You know, I mean, I, we, we need to identify something, latch onto it and do it, and then progress from there because, obviously, since two thousand eight, none of this has happened.
Right. Mr. Robertson?
Yeah, I, well, first of all, I think the meeting on, that's coming up very soon, is a good place to start because any, look at the corridor study, it jumps out at you that this would require considerable private investment in order to, in order to realize the vision here. And the property owners have mistaken it, and we, obviously, the conversation begins with them to find out what we, we need to do to make it more likely for them to invest privately in their own property and improve the overall look of the, of the, of the mile stretch there, the entire triangle, if you will. Obviously, we have our role to play and, and the plans that we have for, for the DPS Building and Fire Hall arguably are a public contribution to the overall area, but the still, it's still heavily weighted toward private investment. So I think that the conversation that you've called for, that you've scheduled for, is a good place to start.
This is a thirteen-year-old study, right? Yes. Would it unduly delay it to send it back to the Planning Commission, the current Planning Commission and say, all right, here it is, there's, it's a great plan, but it's expensive? Are there pri, like, give us maybe five priorities from this that where we could go on? Sidewalks, streetlights, what have you, so that we have a, a better indication as to how to proceed? When is this meeting, by the way, with the, with the folks? We're doing it September eighth. Is that too quick to send it to the Planning Commission or? I don't think they would have it back yet. They're, they're going to be meeting September second, but they would get it in their hands and that's about it. But, I don't think it's a bad idea to have them review it. I think, I agree with Mr. Robertson that we'll get some ideas from, you know, the business owners as to what they feel would be a priority and what, what they could realistically maybe fund or, you know, what they would see as important to them. So sidewalks, if I'm a business, I pay for that? Right now, it is, yes. We priced it out several years ago, I think before Mr. Lehman was on board, but I think back then, you know, it was about eight hundred thousand dollars, and that was prior to even looking at the cost of moving the utilities because there's quite a few utilities that would be in the way of a sidewalk. Streetlights, same thing? What's at the... Like decorative lights? We didn't price that out, but that's another idea, too, that, you know, do some decorative lights. And then, you know, you also run into that if we're going to do it between Maple and Hill Road, is what about the businesses south of there or along Hill Road that will say, hey, how come you're not spending some money over in my area? Dennis, maybe you can speak to, there, there is the possibility of, we have the DDA in the, in the, the south part of the township, there is the possibility of forming a corridor improvement, what is it, CIP or something, or what? Corridor improvement.
Even in the two thousand and eight study, and it was actually, it was fourteen years ago that they undertook this study, September of two thousand and seven, finalized it a year later. You look at, one of the recommendations that they had for their action strategies was to create a corridor improvement authority. It would function much like the DDA does, you'll create a tax increment financing district and then any, once you have the baseline set, then you capture anything that goes in and goes above that. One of the toughest parts about doing that is if you're in an area, you know, we created our DDA, has a lot of vacant land, so it was easy to capture a baseline. As soon as something goes on there, we've just picked up, like Magna, you know, twenty-some million dollars' worth of new taxable value because it went on that vacant land. Creating a tax increment financing district here in the northern part of the corridors really built out, it would take, somebody comes in and really has some impact, takes down one of the old buildings and puts up something new before you start capturing positive taxable value. So just caution the board that creating that, I'm not against it, I think it could be a good idea so that you can start to fund some of those improvements, but it will take several years to have positive financial flow into that TIF district. So, it works the same way as our DDA does, it's just not gonna have as, the impact will be much slower. It's gonna take you a while to actually develop the financial wherewithal to be able to put sidewalks in or do something with the utilities. But if, once it spurs and things start to move, then, you know, how it goes, where it's just a chain reaction and the whole area starts to pick up, then that taxable value would be positive and it was, it would increase that flow.
Over the years, we have had a few businesses that came in and made some drastic improvements to a few of the buildings. One, very recently, that put a considerable amount of investment into their building along Saginaw Street. Any thoughts on?
I think, you know, one of the things that you guys should consider is if, is the plan still relevant? Is this what this board envisions when we talk about, you know, you, you selected the Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement, you know, and, and Appearance of the North End? Is this overreaching of what your vision was when you came together for your strategic plan? Maybe it's worth the folks on the board who are interested, having three board members work with Planner Smith on a review of it to see if it's really still relevant and this is kind of the plan that you guys have. Again, it's a long-range plan, but it has to start somewhere. And if we would've started back in two thousand and eight, of course, the bottom fell out of the economy right after they launched this thing, and that's why it never moved forward. I love the look of it, you can, you can really imagine what, you know, Saginaw Street would look like if it, if it looked like this. But it's, it's a very aggressive plan, and it definitely will take years, but it's gotta start somewhere. They're talking about, you know, putting in some feeder roads behind, feeder streets behind and underground utilities and, I mean, very aggressive, very expensive, but you do it a piece at a time. Again, but it has to fit your vision. I mean, you, you said it, if you kick it to the Planning Commission right now, they're gonna say, yeah, it looks good, and bounce it back to you. It would be my fear, right? Because they, it's your vision that we've got to encompass. If you look at this and say, no, this was way too aggressive, like this is overreaching, we're never gonna move this forward, what we mean by that is, you know, we can throw out the Saginaw Street Corridor Plan or let's focus on these, you know, five things that we liked about it. Because what you're trying to accomplish is not what was in this plan from two thousand and eight.
You know, there, there may be some low-hanging fruit that isn't in the plan, you know, that I, I look at, you know, as you come across Maple Road on Saginaw Street coming into Grand Blank Township, there's a building on both sides that welcome you, and both of them look horrible. If, if I could wave the magic wand on Saginaw Street north of Hill Road, what would I do? I guess is what I'm thinking, to make the biggest improvement in the quickest way. And it would be to do something with those two buildings that are probably the biggest eyesore in the whole stretch, and it's the first thing that you see when you come into the township. How you do that, I don't know, but I'm just saying, you know, this plan is very exhaustive in terms of covers everything from nuts to bolts, everything from feeder streets to what have you. But I think part of what we have to do is get investment coming into the area to start with because otherwise, I think, you know, we're gonna be funding all this. And the idea is, how do we spur private development to come into the area? We have some vacant land along there, there's some vacant buildings that if we could get businesses to, to see it as a desirable area, would be what we need to do, I think, but... So yeah, I think a reordering of, you know, what's in this plan, there, there's a few things, like these buildings that are vacant that probably weren't around or weren't vacant when this plan was put together. So I would, I would be in favor of having a three-member committee made up of our board. I know Paul has expressed a lot of interest in this, Mr. White, that is. I would be willing to serve on it. I don't know, anybody else willing to serve on, on that committee? Ms. Hugo? Okay, and that'd be great because Ms. Hugo serves on the Planning Commission, so... We'll plan to meet and go through, yes, Mr. White?
Just have a couple.
Sure.
And I, I would not be in favor of kicking this back to the Planning Commission because I just feel like that would be spinning wheels for three or four months, and then it would end up back in front of us and we go, okay, now what do we do? What can we do with the road commission? Because I think part of this is just the design of Saginaw Street is a big barrier to really improving it. I mean, it's a five-lane road. It's tough to create a walkable area in a five-lane road. I mean, I always say the Dort and Saginaw intersection scares me more than about any other intersection in the area because you've, just the angle they drive at, the high speed. I mean, what could we do to possibly, you know, try to get a, like a roundabout put in there to slow everybody down, for one? And when you slow people down, then it's gonna spur closer investment, you know, you're gonna create a more walkable area if people actually slow down to nothing versus, you know, because people aren't traveling fifty-five at that Dort. When I turn on, on the Saginaw, they're going sixty-five. And it's scary, you gotta hit the gas to get through there, and people don't wanna walk in the area where you've gotta fly through there. So I don't know what we can do as a board, that seems like something for the road commission, but for the Metropolitan Planning Commission, I'm not exactly sure what to do.
Yeah, the, the speed along there is, you know, pretty significant. I know in the plan, it talks about maybe even the idea of putting a boulevard down the center of Saginaw Street. Clerk Robertson?
Yeah, I, like I said, I reviewed the corridor study over the last few days and, and I'm not, I'm no traffic engineer and nobody, nobody is on this board and, and, but there's a real science to how roads are built. And a particular mile stretch can't be taken in isolation because it's connected to everything else. And I'm not sure, even if they wanted to do a boulevard, whether or not the traffic engineers would permit it. That's a whole can of worms just to itself as far as traffic speeds. These things are dictated by state, state statute, they're dictated by the number of ingresses, egresses that are, exist on a particular, particular stretch. So there's a lot of different variables in the equation with regard to that. And I, so it's, I understand your sentiment and I appreciate trustee White's, you know, keeping this issue in front of the board because you're right, we do need to address the issue of, of this stretch of road as a gateway and as the northern gateway to Grand Blank Township. But boy, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how easy it's going to be to alter traffic patterns or speeds or what have you in the area. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor.
I'm no traffic engineer, but I do know and from reading the study, as well as having served a little bit on the Planning Commission, that the entrances and exits to the businesses between Hill Road and Maple on Saginaw Street would never be allowed today the way they're set up. I mean, you know, in the study, it says, you know, the distance between some of these entrances and exits are like, you know, just a matter of a few feet. And, you know, if a new business were to come in, we probably would require some changes in that regard, but, yeah, I mean, you don't know these things though till you explore them, so I'm all about seeing what the options are. We talk, you know, it's at Saginaw Street, though, I mean, is, is five-lane from, you know, from the city of Grand Blank all the way up to, you know, through Burton, in fact, and it's a state road, so they're gonna have, you know, the authority on that. Yes, Mr. Kilmer?
I believe, I'm not positive on this because I don't remember seeing the signs out, but I believe they just raised the speed limit on Dort Highway in that section, that it is now fifty-five miles an hour. Is that correct?
I see our police chief shaking and said yes, in agreement.
Yeah, so it went from forty-five to fifty-five, which doesn't really help what Mr. White is talking about at all.
Yeah, although maybe it gets people on Dort, people that wanna go faster take Dort instead of Saginaw Street, but not sure why that was the case, but, you know, one, one thing we're looking at here that was mentioned is, you know, with our campus projects, we have a committee that's meeting to talk about, you know, how we're going to develop our campus here with the fire department and potentially DPW building. And part of the idea that, that has been discussed and I brought up was, you know, turning this into a park-like setting. You go down to Oakland County, for example, to where their courthouse is, where their county service is, and it's like a park, you can walk from one building to the other. And with our campus here, you can actually have a path going around the pond back here, and it will add some, some park area to the, this area since there, there isn't any really, which would help improve the area. So I guess we'll refer this to our committee, you know, we'll go through it a little bit more. We've got a meeting on the eighth that will get some input from business owners as to what they see, by Mr. Fike and then Mr. Raridan. I would, you know, ask the committee just to maybe pare this down. This is an exhaustive study. Maybe we can get some, you know, a good five bullet points out of it that we can focus on and then decide, all right, can we do this and can the businesses help us? Also, some kind of a welcome sign, you know, maybe at Maple and Saginaw, that, hey, you're in Grand Blank Township. Now, I don't know, maybe there is one there already, but then since that's kind of the entrance to what we're talking about, maybe there's some kind of a, you know, hey, welcome! Well, Mr. Kilmer and I did meet with one of the business owners, their property owners that, that owns the property on the, I guess it would be the south west corner of Maple and Saginaw, and spoke with him about his intentions, and we plan to follow up with another meeting. So I, I think it's gonna take some one-on-one meetings with business owners along here to figure out, and let them know that we're serious about doing something in the area. Mr. Raridan?
Yeah, I think we should really consider Mr. Lehman's idea, even though we might not realize it under this board, but if we develop like a DDA or a TIP or whatever, it, it might build slowly and maybe the next board or even the board after would be able to utilize the funds to make significant changes. But if we, if we did it now, we would get the process rolling, capture anything that we could, correct?
Correct. And it, you know, that's one of the things, they said it's, it would grow slower, but if, if and when the area takes off and begins to make that transition, now you're gonna see the taxable value coming as it changes hands, uncaps, people come in and revitalize a business.
And so you take a two-pronged strategy, this being one, and the committee as a second.
And there might be some things that, that aren't huge cost to helping. There might be some things like a welcome sign, there might be beautification efforts. We just spent, my wife and I spent some time in Marquette and the beautification efforts there are just amazing. The flowers that are planted along the streets and on the roundabouts are just incredible. And, you know, depending on what the level of interest is with the business owners along this stretch, there might be that possibility, too, of doing planting to start with and just beautifying the area, so...
Another example of that is Sherlaway.
Yes, Sherlaway, yes.
They, they definitely put some, some real effort into beautifying their city.
Right. Yep. Okay, well, unless there's any further comment, we will proceed with having a committee take a look at the study. Yes, Mr. Lehman?
Before you guys move away from the strategic plan update, I did wanna just provide another update to code enforcement.
Absolutely.
We met this morning, Attorney Laddie, myself, the planner, code enforcement, Amy Wilkins and Chief Wiles, and had a further conversation about our code enforcement efforts. I can provide the update that we did make the job offer. It's going through the background process now for the part-time code enforcement official would be starting on August thirtieth or September first. The other part-time code enforcement official has a tentative start date of September twenty-seventh. So we do have those positions ready to go. But we brought up a lot of good information today about some of the pitfalls maybe that we face, and we decided that at your next meeting on September seventh, we're actually gonna put it as a agenda item so that we can walk the entire board through the process so it's out and we, everybody understands how the process works currently and what legal environment that we have to operate in while doing this so that, I know it's sometimes it's frustrating... I know it's sometimes it's frustrating if somebody, I read one actually on social media earlier today that somebody had posted, well, I complained about my neighbor, but nothing was ever done. Well, it, it, it's one of the things about code enforcement. We talked about the ten day notice period and then we go there, they ask for more time, we provide more time. By the time you're ticketed, it could take two to three months to go through the court process. So it's, we want to just do that and I think it would be a good public service as well to have the whole presentation. So that'd be my proposal for the board is it'll just be a brief presentation on code enforcement efforts. We're going to meet before then and hopefully we can kind of present a better plan for of how code enforcement's moving forward and what we're going to do as part of the overall strategic planning process.
I appreciate that, Mr. Limita, the discussion on social media with regard to code enforcement. I brought up the example of trailers and driveways and I, I received a number of phone calls actually regarding that and it held true to what I was saying is that by us increasing enforcement that we are going to actually draw criticism from residents who are opposed to, to the enforcement of, of, of our ordinances. And so I guess there's, you know, the sign ordinance, for example. We, we do not allow people to put signs at our exits of our expressways selling bed sheets or work from home or whatever it is. But we also have churches that want to put signs out. We have people that want to put estate sales. We can't regulate based on what the content is. It's like we either allow all these snipe signs or we, we don't allow them at all. And so we've elected to say we're not allowing them at all. But my sign just is gonna, you know, everybody has an exception. You know, and the, the idea with the trailer, I spoke with Jeremy Smith today a little bit about it, what they do in some other communities. But I use my trailer for work or but it's only going to be here for a few days. There might be some things that we need to tweak, but and I'm sure we're always open to the public making suggestions on how we make that work. I think Davison Township with their trailer program or whatever their ordinance, they allow you to have it there from maybe what David May till-
April to October?
April to October, you can have it. Maybe that's something we want to look at. I don't know, but it opens up a whole bunch of other complaints because all the people have been keeping trailers out of their neighborhood. Now we've given carte blanche between April and October to bring your trailers in, you know? Mr. Laddie?
You remember, we, at the planning commission level and township board level, we, we debated the trailer issue. And, and this is a little bit of an exaggeration, but half the room was for it and half the room was against it.
Yes.
It's a very interesting topic.
Right. Whenever you talk about enforcing ordinances, there, there's people on both sides of those ordinances. We have an ordinance with regard to farm animals, right? Ten acres or more?
Well, yeah, we do. And that's becoming more and more of an issue. And it's interesting because the the chickens, you know, the, the smaller livestock kind of comes in and out of fashion and we, and, and I think we're on another wave. And so people are now, you're finding them in, in smaller and smaller lots and we're going to have to make a decision about what we want to do with that because obviously some people love them, some people hate them. So that'll be something unfortunately you'll have to, you'll have to weigh in on. It sounds like a, it sounds like a frivolous topic, but believe me, there are people that are dedicated to it.
So you'll be able to explain to us what a city chicken is?
All varieties of chickens we'll cover.
So I understand we, we had somebody with some goats, but you know, they were, they were smaller than some people's dogs, but
Well, we do have, we do, and that's, and that's a case that's currently pending because our ordinance basically says that you can't have livestock unless you have ten acre piece of property. And, and then there, so there are exceptions for service animals and things and and you'd be surprised at the, at the category of animals that people are, are trying to consider service animals, including goats. And I read a case about a miniature horse and again, folks are creative.
Right. So we'll have some interesting discussion as we get into code enforcement. Mr. Pike?
I read that social media post that you were referring to, Dennis, and you're right, Mr. Laddie. This is a controversial issue and maybe we should invite the public, if they want to speak out about it to the next meeting to say-
Trailers or the farm animals?
Well, mainly the, the trailers. Although, you know, the farm animals is a whole other I, you know, thought. I know Fenton Township had real issues with this and it went to court and it would be, got a lot of media publicity and, you know, I guess my question with that would be, what's the law? I mean,
Well, with, with the chickens and, and not, not service animals, the service animals has to do the, the Fair Housing Commission. And, and so the federal standards are applied to municipalities as well and, and the, the rule of thumb is that if you can make a reasonable accommodation for somebody to enjoy their property or, or to rent property, then, then you need to do that. But there, as far as service animals go, there, the animals have to actually have some specific training or characteristic that directly benefits whatever condition that the folks have. So it's a, it's really on a case-by-case basis. The issue with the right, with, with the chickens is that we have a, a real amorphous Right to Farm Act in the state of Michigan. And we have these things called generally accepted agricultural management practices. People call them GAMS. And really it kind of gives carte blanche to the Department of Agriculture to decide what the standards are for livestock. And livestock is any commercial, the keeping of, of commercial animals. And, and you'd be surprised at, at the number of people that sell an egg once a year and consider that commercial. But we're not able to, we're not able to regulate over the top of the Department of Agriculture because theoretically they're the experts and, and we are we're sort of a jack of all trades, yes. So so, so you, the, the problem you have is, is you're always in a battle with, with Department of Agriculture standards or Right to Farm Act standards and then implementing your own regulations. Now, the, the one thing the Department of Ag did is they create, they recognized that they're getting conflicts of, of livestock in, in high-density residential areas. And so they created an option for municipalities that takes into account non-farm structures and how many are in a certain circumference of an area. And then they say to you, if that's your, if that, if that's your circumstance municipality, then you're free to regulate these things however you want. You can make, you can limit to the numbers, you can put them in certain locations, you can, you can actually overrule the Department of Ag when it comes to a high, to, to high-density residential. So that, so that's an option for us. We did it in well, we, we actually did sort of a comprehensive one in Davison that's, that's got mixed reviews as, as you would expect. And and so we could present an option to you to consider if, if you feel that it's becoming more and more of a problem. And I, I, right now, we have, I think, three chicken cases pending in district court and a goat case. So we'll, I'll kind of give you an update on, on what those are and what your options are and, and it comes around enough so that we probably should, should give some thought to what we want to do in the long term.
And we have run into issues. I mean, it isn't just, and I'm sure that's why we're in court. I mean, these, these chickens create a nuisance for the people that live around them in some of these situations. It isn't just a matter of picking on somebody because they have a couple of chickens. Right, David?
Yeah, yeah, no, that's true. That's true. Again, it's just divisive. You're either, you're either okay with it or you got a big problem with it. It's very interesting.
I mean, we've had situations where the smell and the the manure or what have you from the chickens was untenable to the residents living around them.
We did. We had, we had a case in, in the northwest portion of the township in our, our four district where lady had, it wasn't so much chickens, it was rabbits. She had a lot of rabbits, a really small lot and, and it was it really affected the neighbors substantially.
Right.
And, yeah, so it can be an issue.
The other issue is that just for the board's information, that something that's kind of going on and I'm new to knowing about this, so maybe you are too, but kind of, you know, we're in the age of Uber and Lyft where people use their own vehicles, transport people. We have people also doing that with their RVs, renting them out to people. Well, now comes a service for pet watching. That if you want to become a, a person that watches people's pets, you list yourself on this website that now you can, for whatever your fee is, you can start watching pets and become almost like your own kennel. And so we have one resident that I'm aware of that had fifteen animals that they were watching at twenty-five dollars a day. And they were listed on this, on this website and advertising on social media. And so it becomes a business pretty much out of their home. But I mean, when you get fifteen dogs and paying twenty-five dollars per day, it making some pretty good money, but it also is creating quite a nuisance for the neighbors. So I'm not sure, you know, there's I, I know municipalities are creating laws for ordinances regarding vacation home rentals. I don't know if there's ordinances that could be put in place for people, you know, I know we have a limit of like five dogs, I think.
Yeah, I mean, they may be less than that.
I thought it was three.
I think it's, okay. We can regulate domestic animals, so we, we have the ability to do that and and so that, that scenario, that hypothetical that you just described, that would be contrary to our ordinance and, and easier to enforce than some of the other agricultural
Sure.
ordinances.
So it's, everything's constantly changing and we have to evolve with it, right? So. Okay, anything else on our strategic plan? Thank you. Okay, moving on to new business. Item seven A, the board will consider a motion to approve a contract with Water Management Specialist, Inc. to perform restoration work on the multipurpose field at Creasy Bicentennial Park in the amount of twenty-eight thousand four hundred and eight dollars and for the township superintendent to sign all related contracts and documents. What's that? Okay, motion by Treasurer Kilmer. Can we have some discussion? Oh, absolutely. Or by-
We need his support.
By Raridan.
Okay.
Okay. In discussion, I'm sure we'll have a presentation here. Want to hear from our Parks Director?
Yes, we do.
What is this? Linahan?
Okay, so a couple of years ago, the old Parks Commission started to install a multipurpose field on the north end of the park.
You say the old commission, that was a commission run by the city, the schools, you know, the township.
Correct.
Just so the board's familiar with. So in the past year and a half, we took over our park and the running of it.
Correct. Since the inception of the project, there's been some issues with the irrigation quality of the grass, the ground, all of that. So the past contractor brought in this company, Water Management Services, who is also the one that has done our infields and who will be doing the waterline restoration. So they came in, they redid the the irrigation and that. And, you know, we, we've been having trouble with the grass growing and we finally identified that there was actually a high salt content in the ground. So we've been flushing that out and this is their recommended plan on how to establish the grass.
Mr. White?
Those are the soccer fields?
Uh, the, the multipurpose field that is right next to, is across from the soccer fields, right next to the north pavilion. So there, there's the playground right there and then there's that, that large field in between. That's what we're talking about.
We haven't been able to use it for anything because we've been trying to get grass to grow there and it just
Correct.
wouldn't grow.
Yep.
Okay. Is it possible to flush that out? I mean, is this something usable?
Yeah, so we've, we've been doing ground corrings of it and then we've just been putting massive amounts of, of fresh water on it to, to drive the salt down and out.
Where does the salt come, was the salt just? If we're, if we're washing it out, how do we know it won't come back?
So we're changing our water source. The, the salt content was a direct result of our, of our water source.
Anything, Mr. Limita, on subject?
Dennis from Water Management Specialists. We first hired him a year and a half ago or whatever it was when we first did the ball field, the very first quad that we redid on a competitive bid. He came in lower than everyone else who bid on it. He's done extensive work, including like for Central Michigan University. He's really focused on a lot of athletic fields. Not only did he come in considerably lower than the others, but he also came in and said, hey, you've got some requirements in here that you don't need and I'm going to show you why you don't need it. And he saved us an additional forty thousand dollars on took something out of the bid just to show us that in his professional opinion, it would have been overkill for what we're trying to accomplish. And it came out. So the guy has the most integrity. We, we really appreciated working with him. He did the other quad of softball fields this year and he's the one who helped us with this, uncover what the issue was with this. In fact, he was able to show us that the original contractor had put in not up-to-bid specifications on the water line through that multipurpose field and we were able to have the original contractor fix all of that system at no cost to us. This guy's been nothing but a, you know, great professional consultant for us out at Parks and Recreation. I think Patrick's recommendation to use him to really get this project turned around is, is a good recommendation.
Patrick, what, Mr. Linahan, what's the projected timeline for being able to use that field with using these guys?
At this point, we'll probably be looking at spring for use. You know, we're, we're not going to be extremely aggressive because as far as growing grass and that sort of thing, you know, we want to make sure, you know, that we take the time you know, to let everything grow in and that you'll see in the packet that he is calling, you know, he'll, he'll maintain a fertilized program and that for a year. You know, after, after we start the project. So, you know, he's in it for the long run on this to, to make sure that it grows.
What is the plan for the all-purpose field? Is it lacrosse or?
Well, it's a multipurpose field, so
Types of thing, I mean.
Yep, so, so lacrosse, soccer and football.
Okay. Very good.
Well, it's a worthwhile expenditure to me.
Yeah, be able to use it.
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion? There's a motion, support.
A motion of support.
Yep. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Linahan. Item seven B, the board will consider a motion to approve the purchase of ten patrol rifles and accessories in the amount of fourteen thousand one hundred dollars and for the township superintendent to execute all related contracts and documents. The information was in your packet regarding this. We have Chief Ron Wiles here. Anybody has any questions?
Yeah, just one.
Please, Chief.
Hey, Chief. What do we do with the ones we're replacing?
That's an excellent question. So it's a long story. Let me try to give you the short version.
Okay.
Ones we are-
Digest, okay.
We, we have a multi-year plan in place to replace aging patrol rifles that literally were manufactured in the seventies. We got those as part of a military program back in the day called eleven twenty-two program. Where municipalities bought rifles from the government to use during their patrol operations. We are stuck with those rifles. We can't sell them. We can't trade them. We are stuck with them. So we are holding on to them. And it has been a, I can't tell you all the steps we've gone through to try to find a resolution to that so we don't have these things. We've talked to the ATF, we've talked to other branches of the federal government. And everyone tells us the same answer. There is nothing you can do with them. You have to keep them.
But they're very, they're highly collectible rifles.
Highly collectible.
However, we cannot sell them or part with them.
At one point, previous to this plan in place, we had a deal worked out with a person that had a federal firearms license where we were going to trade these rifles for handguns and rifles. And we could not do that because we can't get rid of them.
I'm learning new things all the time. What, as, as weapons get older, do they become less difficult to, or are they more difficult to maintain? Do they become a, a hazard or a liability to officers in the field? What's, 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 what say you?
Yeah, so, so like anything, you, I should say, like any piece of equipment we have, it is well-maintained. We've done everything we can to maintain these, make sure they're operational. Currently, they are operational. But over the years, especially from the seventies, technology changes a little bit. But over the years, especially from the seventies, technology changes a little bit. Everything, including weapons, become more reliable, easier to use, easier to service, easier to maintain and, um, easier to add other accessories to, whether that is a sling, a light, that kind of stuff. And that's where we are now, these, these older weapons, while they are functional, operational, they're to the point where in today's environment, in the law enforcement world, they're not ideal. And that's why we started this plan several years ago to start replacing these.
Thank you, thank you very much, chief, appreciate it.
Any other questions?
You're going to replace them, but, but you're not going to get rid of them?
Correct.
They'll remain locked up.
Just going to get more.
Yep. And should that change in the future, some change of the rule at the federal level, we will certainly come back to the board and, and see if we can get rid of them.
So whether or not we buy these other ten rifles here really has nothing to do with, we, we can't, we can't sell the.
Correct.
Right.
Okay. Yes, okay. There's a motion supported.
And who is that motion by again?
Motion by Dr. Raridan.
Raridan, motion by Raridan, supported by.
Trustee Fike.
Fike, okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Right there.
I am.
If we can put like a display case for the old rifles or something.
Good.
Okay, item C, the board will consider a motion to approve the requested pay scale for part-time radio operator slash clerk wages. Chief?
Yeah, so as you know, we run a dispatch records area twenty-four seven. And, and the people that staff that currently are five full-time employees, that their wages are governed by a collective bargaining agreement. Then we have a part-time contingent that covers shifts where they're off, whether it's sickness, time off, whatever the case may be. Currently, we have three part-time contingent radio operators, clerks. We are doing backgrounds on four, so that'll take that number to seven to fill in those gaps. They are not covered by, their wages are not covered by a collective bargaining agreement, their, their wages are set by the board. Their wages have not changed since two thousand and fourteen. So respectfully, I come today to ask for an increase in their, their wages to a more current updated rate that would put them in line with where they should be.
Is that right?
Okay.
Currently, their rate for a starting wage is thirteen fifty, I'd like to raise that to fifteen dollars. Their first year, one-year wage is fourteen twenty-five, I'd like to raise that to sixteen dollars. Their two-year wage is sixteen, I'd like to raise that to eighteen. And their three-year wage is eighteen, I'd like to raise that to twenty. And again, that was, last time it was updated was two thousand and fourteen.
Given the current environment, I think that's appropriate, so I'd move, I'd make the motion.
Okay. Your support by Ms. Hugo?
I got a question.
Sure. Mr. Fike?
The chief, are these raises, you know, comparable to other townships and cities around?
In Genesee County, there's not a whole lot of other departments that do what we do when it comes to, we have our twenty-four seven, we staff that area where they take calls from residents, where they can dispatch cars if need be, do lean work for, for officers in the field. I don't know of another agency that has that capability in Genesee County. Flint Township does, but they don't do the same things. City of Fenton, they have their own PSAP down there, so they're a little, they're even different than us. Genesee County Sheriff's Office, they have people there that do similar things, but we're just on a different scale than, than what we do here. So there's really no comparable here in Genesee County.
And to Dennis, is, have you figured out if we do this, how much, you know, this is going to cost us, say in a year?
Yeah, and Ron and I discussed that before he made the presentation, we walked through it, I don't have the, in front of me, Mr. Fike unfortunately, but there's enough money in contingent wages in the twenty-twenty-one budget currently to cover anything through here and we've already put it into, built it into the twenty-twenty-two budget in anticipation of the board's approval.
We can afford it.
We can afford it. I think after, if you look at, you know, after seven years of not making any adjustment on this and if you just, or if you drive past McDonald's right now, I think they're advertising thirteen fifty, there's a lot of competition out there. We found this when we were filling Parks and Recreation jobs earlier this year. It used to be everybody loved to go outside for Parks and Recreation, work for the summer at ten dollars and twenty-two cents an hour, I think we were at. We couldn't get a applicant. At, it, it's just the wage inflation has gone up and especially with here, we're looking for some qualified people who can still remain calm under pressure. It is a, you know, you think it's just a, you know, more of a dispatch, it's not a, it, it's a, still a skill set that not everybody can accomplish.
I can tell you this, I, I, one of the officers with nine-one-one consortium here in Genesee County and they have a tough time finding people to, to work as nine-one-one operators. Burnout rates pretty quick and the wages are substantially higher. So, you know, we're competing probably for the same type person or same person, you know, same people. So I commend your recruitment efforts that we have, you know, we've been successful, but I can see us getting to a point where we won't be able to find people if we don't adjust our wages.
You know, I, I'd like to add, I, I worked as a corrections officer, I worked as a radio operator, police officer, and the radio operator's job is significant, it's, there's so much stress there that people don't realize because they're trying to handle people on the phone, communicate to the officer. If they give the wrong information to the officer, things can drastically change. So this seems really reasonable.
You know, and, and these people at our department, they, they are the voice of Grand Blank Township. When you call for help, whatever that is, that who, that's who answers the phone, that's the first voice you hear, that's the first impression you have of Grand Blank Township or Grand Blank Township Police Department.
If I'm having an emergency in my home, I want to make sure the person that's answering the phone at Grand Blank Township, you know, emergency services is somebody who's on the ball. Mr. Kilmer?
I'd like to say that, that recently I had occasion to use that service. No, and they did an excellent job, thank God they were there.
Right. Okay, so it sounds like.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve if, if that's an order, Mr. Riser.
Sure.
Okay.
I couldn't remember if we already had a motion.
I don't know that we did.
Okay. Supported by Raridan.
Raridan, very good.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Next is our future agenda items. Mr. Lemanon, any thoughts on what we want to cover with our strategic plan at our next meeting?
So we can go wherever, you know, we can do another broad overview or we can do a dive into any one of the other ones that we haven't done yet. If I made the suggestion, it would be about the branding. One of your community connectiveness and identity goals was branding for Grand Blank Township and it's, it's making Grand Blank Township visibly distinguish from other municipalities. Your committee has met, you've chosen a logo, you've done a lot of the things. I think it would be a good time to maybe get a little bit, an update on that and then dive into that a little bit deeper. And then, of course, you'll also be having the presentation on code enforcement, that may lead to additional discussion.
I think that would be good, I think, you know, one of the things with signage too is with that logo, we've got, uh, I forget how many signs around the township, uh, leading into the township that say, you know, they're just the small metal ones, but we know where all of those are and we've got photos of every one of them and, uh, after we're, we go through the branding with our board, maybe we can take on that project, replace those as well. So, okay.
Very good. Next on the agenda, our board reports and anything, Ms. Hugo, with regard to planning?
I don't have anything to report, other than our next meeting is September second.
Okay. I had a few individuals ask me if we were going to be talking about the McCandless Road project at this meeting, including some news media, I told them no, that really, I don't believe we received any application at this point other than for the rezoning request, is that correct that you know of, Mr. Lemanon?
We, uh, they had asked to be on the planning commission for the September second meeting with a straight-up rezoning request. We've been doing our due diligence like we always do with any, especially a major development to make sure that we can unequivocally either say yes or no, that everything seems to be falling into place. We've uncovered a couple of issues with that proposal on McCandless Road. Number one, that we think needs to be addressed is the storm water runoff, it has to be contained on your property and I think it's important that they provide us that information before we move it forward. The other thing is about three years ago, the actual sanitary sewer pump station on McCandless by McCandless and Saginaw, we don't own that property and we worked with the property owner to try to secure a permanent easement and to purchase it and they turned us down. So we did a, a estimate or had an engineer's estimate put together for what it would be if we abandoned that pump station and went to a gravity feed, but it came in at about two-point-four million dollars back then and it was at least three years ago. One of the reasons being is when we built up that intersection, so we'd have to bring it down fifty foot deep. Not only do, would we have to do that, but then the road commission's requiring that we repave the entire road because where it is, is right below the road surface on the west side of Saginaw-McCandless intersection. Two-point-four million dollars today, I'm sure is going to be a lot closer to three million dollars. We need to abandon that pump station. So I think in the interest of, of full disclosure, we've asked these guys, we've, we're putting the engineers back next week, pulling them in for a meeting to discuss what that looks like in today's dollars on that gravity feed as well as, you know, abandoning the, the current pump station. We think we'll have the meeting with the engineers and then we've requested that the proposed developers come in for a meeting the week after that so that we can show them all the things that, you know, would be required for us to do that project. I think that, that both of those are significant issues and hurdles that I think I would much rather they were aware of those and had a plan to address it before we go through a rezoning and they start site plan review and then they get hit with these things. It's just not a good way to do business, I'd rather manage those expectations upfront. And Planner Smith and I have been working on it along with DPS Director Sears and Scott Haymeyer and Jack Wheatley from Row Engineering. So it's probably going to delay it till October at least, maybe they can address these things. Right now, we couldn't make the recommendation to move forward with that abandonment of the pump station because we've, the board has approved the KCI project moving forward. If we're going to do the gravity feed, that's probably a twenty-twenty-five project, would, would get fit into our capital projects plan or somewhere around twenty-twenty-five, so that's kind of where we're at, it's new information, they've been provided that. So it's kind of, you know, how we move forward from there in October, I, I just can't say it this time.
And that's nothing to say, there, there's other things that might be required too. I can imagine with McCandless Road being one lane each way, I have to believe that a third lane might be required right there if you're having that number of, you know, condos or apartments built.
They'll have to conduct a complete traffic study for, as part of the site plan review process. And I'm sure there'll be some concerns there because of the, there's a significant impact, there's a hill right there and as you know, my house is the one that's right on top of that hill there. So I, I understand the sight line, the visibility issue that exists right there and I, they're going to be required to address that issue as well. We tried to, rather than wait and let somebody expend a lot of money on architects and engineers and then get to the point where they get the rug pulled out from under their feet, our goal is always to manage expectations by providing any significant, you know, things that we see in advance so that they can make informed decisions before they're, they've expended a lot of money. Not saying that this stops the project, but it, they're going to need to address those issues to move forward.
I think it's good that our, our township takes that kind of view, you know, before somebody does expend a lot of money and effort and then they find out that it's not feasible. So Dennis, could they use the old pump station or no?
The problem with using the old pump station is we were going to replace it three years ago and that's why we did the engineering study because of the, we weren't able to make a deal with the property owner. We do need to abandon it, it needs to go somewhere. If we use a pump station, it has to be sized accordingly, we've got plenty of capacity downstream. What we don't have is capacity at the pump station and whenever we can abandon a pump station, we do so. A rebuild, to rebuild a pump station is over a million dollars. Gets you good for about twenty years, but anytime we can abandon it, abandon one and go to gravity feed, it's obviously better because we, we lose one big maintenance item. But we, we have to find property to put it on, I mean, I, there's, it's a significant challenge at this point.
Okay. Good. Thank you, Mr. Lemanon. Uh, Mr. White, anything with Sony and Board of Appeals? Mr. Fike, any Metro Alliance? Mr. Raridan, anything with police other than what we heard this evening? Uh, Mr. Treasure Kilmer?
I'm good.
Okay. Clerk Robertson?
Nothing.
Okay. Couple of things with regard to activities. The DDA is moving forward with creating a video, a professional video to help us market the Grand Blank Township, specifically the DDA area. But I think overall it will help with the township. It's going to feature some of the reasons why businesses would want to consider Grand Blank Township since we're globally positioned for success, GPS, so. So that's exciting, our website design, I know Ms. Roberts is working diligently on, on that and the DDA has also is moving forward with being part of that website as well. We have the Ally Challenge coming up this weekend, which I'm sure everybody here is aware of and we ask the public to support as well. Complete with a concert on Saturday evening. I'm not real familiar with the group, but I'm sure many of you are. What's the name of?
I'll be there.
Little Big Town? Little Big Town, okay.
Won a lot of awards.
Okay, well. More of classic rock, but I'll be there, but there'll be fireworks at the end of the evening. So that'll be fun. An issue that continues to be going, brewing is an EMT, emergency medical technician issue that's going on with a couple of municipalities in, in the county that want to change how we currently handle those services. I'm not in favor of, of making a change, but I'm just one voice, so I know that we'll be meeting on that issue very soon. So with that, the Dort Highway Extension continues, I haven't seen any work continuing on that right now, but the engineering, as we mentioned at the last meeting, is still being worked out and hopefully we'll see that get back underway. I, I believe they opened the portion between Pollock Road and, and Baldwin Road. At least when I drove by there, it appeared that it was open. So with that, Mr. Laddie, I know we're going to go into executive session, but before we do that, anything to report on?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Lemanon, anything to report on before?
It's the budget process for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. By law, the board has to receive the general fund and special revenue fund budgets by September first every year and we do that electronically, we've been meeting non-stop over the last few weeks trying to put, wrap that up. We finished our departmental review this afternoon. Finance Director Kathy Sostak will be working on putting the initial draft together. Then we'll go through on Thursday and I'll make my recommendations for where I think the changes to the department requested budgets to see where we're at and then we'll finalize that document. You'll have it sometime on or before September first in an electronic format, we sent to you electronically. Then we compile a hard copy for each board member. So on the meeting of September seventh, you'll have the actual hard copy document that will include all of the department heads narrative, my narrative, the overall budget process. It'll include the capital improvement plan, it'll include the fee schedule for your review to help support what the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two budget is requesting from all the departments. And that's basically the process. We will plan to have the departmental overview to the board whenever the board is ready for it. Typically would be that first meeting in October, gives you guys thirty days to re- Gives you guys 30 days to review the budget and get questions answered or get comfortable, and then we would put on the presentation. Every department head would be here, they'll walk you through why their budget request is what it was. We can discuss the differences. If I didn't make my recommendation the same as theirs, which often happens, but it's with an eye towards, not that I don't trust my department heads to request the appropriate amount, but it's so that we can fund everything, and especially now with the strategic plan adopted, we want to make sure we're doing that appropriately, and that we still have our major focus is on unfunded liabilities. We have to be able to make sure we're funding that appropriately as well. That's kind of the process. I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have throughout this, as we go through it, but once we walk you through it the first year, I think you'll understand the process, and a lot of it is legally prescribed on how we go about it.
Any questions? Okay, I'm going to ask for, we're going to go into a closed session. I first want to just pass on our board's condolences to the Reridan family, to Jude and your family, for passing of your mother this past week, so our thoughts are with you, and we appreciate you being here with us tonight. With that, Mr. Laddie, I believe, or Mr. Lehman?
Motion for closed session to discuss an employment contract negotiation.
Okay.
Role call?
Well, we need a motion by, Ms. Hugo will make that motion, supported by Mr. White, Trustee White.
Closed session.
Roll call vote, so go ahead, Mr. Laddie.
Okay. Yes. Mr. Robertson? Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Reridan?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Okay, we go into closed session at 8:14 PM.
Okay, we'll meet right in the conference room, right here to the right. Okay, so, motion to resume regular session.
Session at 8:40, 8:43 PM.
Supported by Clerk Robertson.
Mm-hmm.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, I would like to make a motion to ask that we move forward with employment agreement for Deputy Fire Chief, and authorize the supervisor and the clerk to execute the agreement.
I'll support that.
Okay, supported by Reridan.
Motion by Bennett, supported by Reridan.
Probably need a roll call vote.
Yes, if we could. Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Reridan?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
I would like to also make a motion that we move forward with the employment agreement for our Director of Information Systems, that we authorize the supervisor and the clerk to execute the agreement, move forward with the hiring.
And I'll support that.
Okay.
Motion by Bennett, supported by Reridan. Record roll call. Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Reridan?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Mr. Lehman, is it okay if we mention the names of the individuals, or? So we'd like to congratulate Kent Miracle for the position of Deputy Fire Chief, and it'll be announced, I'm sure, shortly, and our Director of Information Services, Nathan Lucavell. So both very qualified candidates, and we're looking forward to having them on a more permanent basis. So congratulations to both of them. That, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Second?
Non-debatable, we are.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
We are adjourned to 8:45 PM.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.